Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Regular Meeting at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer and memorial to some of our former colleagues.
In our moment of slideless this evening, let us remember our former employees of the Waterbury Public Schools Systems who have passed away. Elizabeth Aaron's, Public Health Aid for Waterbury Public Schools for many years, and also Janice Stevens, Language Arts Teacher for 34 years. Let us remember them and recognize their service and dedication to the students of Waterbury this evening.
And Vice President Harvick.
Okay, I'd like to just take a few minutes to recognize the passing of Alderman Greg Hadley Senior. He passed this past Saturday, September 15th, early in the morning, from a brief illness. Alderman Hadley was serving his fourth term as Alderman on the Board of Alderman. He was a gentleman. He was a hard worker. Didn't brag about what he was working on, but as we are all finding out now, it's leaving a big gap in the community. His legacy will be his work that he did with our youth, particularly with our youth in the WOW area, that is the Walnut Orange Walsh area, with the Youth Council. For the Board of Education, he served as the liaison from the Board of Alderman, and he also served as a member on the Advisory Committee for the CHRO Recommendations, which works on the hiring of Black and Hispanic educators. At the time of his passing, he was working on a Leadership Institute for Youth. So myself and other friends, State Representative Butler, as well as others, Warren Leach, will need to work on that to ensure that that comes to fruition. So we ask that you pray for his family. Funeral arrangements are being made, but there is a definite gap that exists now as a result of his passing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Stango, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and again, welcome. Commissioner Wab? Here. Vice President Harvick?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Fadano?
Present.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Here.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Here.
President Brown?
Present.
And me. May I say me or you? Meryl Mary, are you observing or are you here too?
I'm here.
Okay. I think that's in there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Number four, Communications, Commissioner Sweeney.
Motion to receive and place on file. Communications is listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Number five, we'll have the approval of the minutes, August 2nd, 2018 workshop and August 16th, 2018 Regular Meeting.
Motion to approve minutes of August 2nd, 2018 workshop and August 16th, 2018 Regular Meeting as distributed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Can I have a motion to go into public address?
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. First on the agenda is Maria Hulse, 11 Simsbury Street.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Maria Hulse, and I'm a lifelong resident of Waterbury. I come before the Board today to plead for my son, Jordan. Jordan is 12 years old, and he's at State Street School. He's been diagnosed for the last six years with anxiety disorder, ADHD, mood disorder, DMDD, and obsessive-compulsive disorder. Jordan has struggled with the diagnosis, and of his mother, I have been by his side every step of the way, and it hasn't been easy. The past six years has included multiple hospital visits and stays, counseling, medications, doctor's visits, therapy, whatever it took to make Jordan better, able to cope with his disorders, and feel like he can be successful in life. Jordan's behaviors issues became present themselves in kindergarten, where he attended Regan School. There, the staff struggled to handle Jordan, and from there, he was sent to Bucks Hill School, where he began to receive some helpful support, one of which, Mrs. Begno of Bucks Hill Elementary School. Her one-on-one support not only helped him understand his struggles, but also helped us as a family. However, once Ms. Begno exited Bucks Hill Elementary School, such support became scarce to none. Once Jordan entered third grade, his issues in school became more of a struggle. From there, he was given permission to attend Kingsbury for two and a half weeks, before sent back to Regan School, where he attended for less than two weeks, before being sent to Bunker Hill School BDLC to complete his fourth grade. Five months later, Jordan started fifth grade year at State Street, where he is presently attends. To say the effects of such an unsteady educational environment had an impact on Jordan would be an understatement. On top of it all, it has been a struggle itself, being a therapeutic school that is supposed to be a positive, alternative learning environment, but instead follows the same discipline procedures as the Waterbury Public Schools. Last year, Jordan received over 30 absentees due to suspensions alone. He was arrested over three times and set by ambulance to the hospital over five times by State Street. As a family, we sent him for further care to hospitals in Massachusetts and New York. Our family experience, experiences were very traumatic in every sense of the word. Our child became, came home each time like a zombie. Different places were suggested he needed different environment for learning, not one where there are students of his same issues, all in the same environment. We have been trying to keep track of all the different incidents this year he's received disciplinary action for. For instance, Jordan received an in-school suspension for skipping down the hallway and accidentally kicking a peer professional in the back of the leg. It was told to us that once we received a write-up weeks later that the staff member was 72-year-old man, which I feel that didn't make a difference. And also, it was filed as a physical altercation. Another instance occurred on September 13th, where he was suspended for five days for pushing his hands away from the same peer professional while trying to witness a fight between two classmates that he took no part in. Again, we received the write-up today, and it states, again, physical altercation. On the phone, I was told that it was an assault. I did a situation report with the FACE Center, where we still have not yet to come to any mutual understanding. I was told it was written up as an assault, but today I did receive it was a physical altercation. I have also written a bullying report this year, hearing that my son was choked by another student in class and bruised under his arm. Since the report, I've yet to receive any contact from the school. Jordan has been beaten up by more than one student at a time at this school. He tells us, his family, that he is picked on daily and he needs to protect himself because no one helps him. He has been waiting since Jordan started, we have been waiting since Jordan started State Street, on an individual behavior plan, but have been told repeatedly by the social worker that the entire school is on the same plan, which this is not true. Every child deserves an individualized behavior plan, so for over two years, my child has not had an individual behavior plan.
If you could summarize, please.
Is that for me?
Yeah. Just if you could summarize, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm towards the end. I don't want my child to fail in life. He is very intelligent. His IQ is a 125. I have been told by the school staff that he is a brat and he has brat syndrome, and he can turn his moods on and off. That's called his mood disorder. State Street needs to be looked out with a close eye. If they can't help my child, send him somewhere that can. Please don't let him fall through the cracks. He is a smart child that needs a challenge, to be challenged educationally, not pushed aside due to his disorders. I don't want to pick my child up from the police station anymore, or have him spending any time away and being hospitalized. We know that Jordan has challenges, but still, he needs to be helped, not punished at State Street, a school that is supposed to be therapeutic. They need more staff that is capable of working with students and giving them a chance to succeed. Yes, there would be hard times, but work through them, find resources that can help these children, not set them up to fail. A little positive note about Jordan, he loves animals. He feels real comfortable around them. He loves music and dancing and basketball. Please, if there's supposed to be a student success plan for the city of Waterbury, let my child be one of those successes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Brian Baker, 275 Peach Orchard Road.
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin, Mayor O'Leary, Commissioners of the Board of Education. As President Brown mentioned, my name is Brian Baker. I live at 275 Peach Orchard Road. I'm here tonight as a parent of a student at Wendell Cross. My son, Andrew, just started kindergarten this year, and so far, he's loved it, actually. His teacher, Liz Marshall, is absolutely fantastic. But I'm actually here not about this school year, but two years ago. Two years ago, on September 1st, 2016, this Board met in committee to establish an expanded building committee for the Wendell Cross School Expansion Project, which had been approved several months prior. Since that time, there has been, to the best of my knowledge, only one meeting, a legislative dinner held at the school about three and a half months after the committee was founded. There has been no communication with the parents, no communication with the principal, and no communication to the expanded committee, which, as many on this Board knows, includes my wife, who signed up as a community member, because at the time, my son was not in school, at least not at Wendell Cross. My concern is, it has been so long since this project was started, since this committee was founded, and it's my understanding that if work has not begun within the next year, by about mid-October of 2019, that the city could lose the state funding due to a lack of action on this proposal. I grew up on East Mountain. It's kind of funny, I went to Wendell Cross, and I walk into the building, and it's déjà vu all over again, because the physical plan hasn't really changed since I graduated from there in 89. I know the plan was to turn it into one of the neighborhood schools. It's a wonderful plan. It's something I've fully supported, the neighborhood schools, when the plan first came out back in 2004, and it's something that I would like to see continue. I know Board policy is, there will be no responses this evening. I respect that, but I would like to put that bug in the Board's ear. I mentioned it at the last PTA meeting last week, and several of the staff and parents shared the same concerns, that this was something that was approved over two years ago, and there's been no action. And I'd like to see some action, at least a definite notification. If the Board has decided to change direction, at least let us, the parents and the staff at the school, know. If they're going to move forward, let us know, and let's get to work on it. Thank you very much for your time.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, and we will get back to you on that. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak, who didn't have a chance to sign up? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Motion to return to the regular order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Superintendent's announcement.
Thank you, Commissioner. We held our first open house yesterday for our elementary and high schools, and look forward to our middle school open house, which will take place next Wednesday, September 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. This Saturday, we are excited about our September 22nd, the Gathering. The annual cultural festival has been growing in size each year since its inception several years ago. Festivities begin with the parade at 11:00 a.m., and each year, our students have enthusiastically participated by marching in the parade and then enjoying the festivities in the library park. I look forward to being a part of that this season. The School Governance Council's annual back-to-school breakfast is scheduled for Thursday, September 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 at Gil Martin School. And we are also pleased that our Title I Annual Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 3rd, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. The Title I District Parent Advisory Council elected new members who will officially be installed for a two-year term, and they will be installed at this meeting. They are the D-PAC Chairperson, Shakira Howard, who is a parent from Carrington; our Vice Chairperson, Barbara Johnson, from Bunker Hill; our Secretary, Margaret O'Brien, from Community; our corresponding Secretary, Isabel Antonucci, from Waterbury Career Academy; our Time Keeper, Charlene Harris, from Willby; and our membership liaison, Elizabeth Acasio, from Rotella. Very pleased also to have had an opportunity to meet with this wonderful group and look forward to continued engagement and work with them. On Monday, October 8th, we are celebrating Columbus Day. There will be no school for our students during that time. And on Tuesday, October 9th, we'll be conducting a professional development day, featuring a convocation at Palace Theater from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., followed by the professional development at individual schools from noon to 3:00 p.m., and there will be no schools for students on that day. I look forward to this day on October 9th, because it gives me the opportunity to address all of our teachers and staff and some of our community members, as we officially kick off our school year, and talk about vision and mission and some of the exciting goals that we're working on in Waterbury Public Schools moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Very briefly, I just want to thank members of the community who came out last night to help the Board plan our conversation on the portrait of a graduate and the role that equity and race play in making sure that all of our students succeed. We're planning a community meeting on November 13th at Waterbury Arts Magnet School, and it will be open to the public, and we're hoping that all segments of the community, business, parents, health professionals, teachers, all segments of the society are welcome to come and participate in this very, very important conversation of what a portrait of a Waterbury graduate should be, and the role that equity plays in that, achieving that goal. So I welcome everybody to participate in that. And with that, we're off to a good start.
Thank you.
Next is the Consent Calendar. Would anybody like to remove anything from the Consent Calendar? Seeing none, I will read the Consent Calendar. 9.1, Request Approval to Apply for the CSDE Primary Mental Health Program Grant for Duggan, Wendell Cross, and Sprague Schools. 9.2, Request Approval of an Agreement of Lease with 562 Connecticut LLC for Property Located at 562 Captain Neville Drive. 9.3, Request Approval of a Professional Service Agreement with Patricia Reinhardt to Provide Consulting Services Under the Quality Enhancement Grant. 9.4, Request Approval of a Professional Service Agreement with Sue Vivian to Provide Consulting Services Under the Quality Enhancement Grant. And 9.5, Request Approval of a Professional Service Agreement with Easter Seals Rehabilitation Center to Provide Consulting Services Under the Quality Enhancement Grant. And those three are all with the State School Readiness Grant. 9.6, Request Approval of an Agreement with Waterbury Youth Services, Inc., as Required by the Youth Service Bureau Grant for Truancy Prevention. 9.7, Request Approval and Acceptance of the Office of Policy and Management Grant Award for the Juvenile Review Board Grant Program. 9.8, Request Approval and Agreement with Waterbury Youth Services, Inc. for Subrecipient Services as Required by the 2018 Juvenile Review Board Grant. 9.9, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Departments. And 9.10, Use of School Facilities by Outside Organizations and/or Waiver Request. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Motion to approve. The Consent Calendar is read.
Madam President, before we make motion. Second.
Discussion.
Well, I want to make a correction to 9.9, if I may.
Yep.
We list 9.9 as our school facilities. There is a request by an internal request that labels it as Crosby Varsity Basketball Practice, that really needs to be renamed to, the gym is an open gym for basketball instruction and practice. It is not a Crosby Varsity Basketball Practice. That actually, as noted, would be in violation of CIAC rules, and that is not the intent of that request. If we refer back to the actual application for that night, it clearly does not say varsity basketball practice. So we meet, we really need to make that correction in the notes. It cannot state that.
Okay, thank you.
There will be no coaches present. That is an open gym for basketball players.
Thank you.
It's very important that we note it that way.
I will.
I don't want that Crosby Varsity team to be in violation of any CIAC rules. So please make that correction. Thank you.
With the permission of the Board, can we make that correction? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There's a motion, and second on the, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you. Item 11.1, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of the Whole recommends that the Board of Education approve to authorize Dr. Verna D. Ruffin, Superintendent of Waterbury Public Schools, to sign any and all grant applications and awards on behalf of the Waterbury Board of Education. Respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Committee on Policy, Commissioner Sweeney.
Item 12.1, ladies and gentlemen, with the Committee, the Committee on Policy recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve revisions to the standing committees of the bylaws of the Board of Education as outlined. Want me to read them all? The standing committees will combine two committees, actually, four committees into two committees. The Committee on, Committee on Building will combine with the Committee on School Facilities and Grounds to become the Committee on Building and School Facilities, and the Committee on Policy and the Committee on Legislation will combine to become the Committee on Policy and Legislation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. 12.2.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revisions to the reporting of child abuse, neglect, and sexual assault, number, Policy Number 5141.4, as required by Public Act 18-15 and 18-17.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. 12.3.
Item 12.3, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revisions to the Recruitment and Selection Policy, Policy Number 4111, as required by Public Act 18-42.
Second.
Discussion.
Under clarification?
Yep. Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you. My question to this is...
Could you speak into the microphone, please? They can't speak at all.
Thank you. So this is if, that we're going to rehire teachers that have been retired and that are coming out of retirement, correct?
Actually, what it is, is that it is an extension of existing legislation from 2018 to 2020 that speaks to the exemption from limitation on compensation of re-employed certified educators. So the legislation already exists. It was due to sunset on June 30th, 2018. The legislature has chosen to extend that to June 30th of 2020.
2020. Okay, and so they could, according to this legislation, they can be rehired with all the amenities of when they, before they retired. Is that correct? Am I reading that right? And if so, how long?
What happened?
It's okay. How long can they do, like, can they go a whole 'nother stench of 10 years?
If I may? I believe it's a two-year maximum in areas of high need.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because, in other words, it's almost like it's double-dipping, so to speak, because they retired, and now they can come back. And if they can come back with all the amenities that they had before they retired, and there's no set, there's nothing in here that states that it's a three-year thing, they could stay for 10 years if they wanted to.
Yeah, and again, at this point in time, the legislation only lasts to 2022 years. And the legislature may or may not take it up again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. 12.14.
Item 12.4, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve of revisions to the attendance requirements for course credit or promotion, Policy 5113, as required by Public Act 18-182.
Second.
And I believe this refers to the guidance towards personalized learning?
Correct. This has to do with chronic absenteeism prevention and intervention plan that the state was to put forward, and they have finally put forward that one paragraph is highlighted for you as to what the state agrees to do.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And very busy tonight, Commissioner Sweeney. 12.5.
Item 12.5, the Committee on Policy recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revisions to the attendance requirements for students under 18 years of age with respect to truancy, Policy 5111. to truancy, policy 5113.2, as required by Public Act 18-182.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Again, is it the same?
It's the same, yeah.
It's the same idea of updating the requirements. And the good news is Waterbury has been in compliance. Other districts were not, but we are in total compliance with these updates.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Committee on School Personnel, Commissioner Stango.
Thank you.
You're going to be busy, too.
Item 13.1, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for the position of Chief Operating Officer. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you.
13.2, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for the position of Director of Personnel and Talent Management. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
13.3, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for the position of Supervisor of Pupil Services. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. This is actually a position I've been against since we did the split with Special Education slash Pupil Services. So I do have some problems with this. I would actually prefer we consider a new job description that will give some of these functions to someone that's already in the office of Special Education, offer that as a promotion to maybe a, an employee who deserves one, and, and divide those duties. I don't feel we need a supervisor of pupil services. I feel we need someone in charge of pupil services, but not at the supervisor level. So I will not be, as I was not in committee, in favor of this. I know we're technically voting on the job description. My concerns are more for the position. The job description is fine. I just don't agree with the position. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor O'Leary.
Thank you. I apologize, I don't have the job description in front of me. Dr. Ruffin, I was wondering if you would just summarize for myself and the audience what the description entails.
Yes. The position Supervisor of Pupil Services works to write and monitor policies to assure that we are in compliance with new legislation. And they also have lead positions meeting with and establishing monthly meetings with some of our support staff to make certain that it is unified mission and delivery of services throughout the district. There is a cohesive planning with counselors, school counselors, and with social workers to make certain that we're utilizing our best practices and that they're uniform across all of the schools. There's a collaboration with administrators also, and intentional professional development that would assist us with restorative practices, as well as make certain that those become embedded in our practices, into all of the schools. There is also advisory, working with curriculum, and curriculum that the district has already established, especially working for students with careers and career advancement. There's an opportunity to work as a 504 district coordinator, which is huge, and it goes beyond the services that we provide for Special Education, but it also addresses 504. It also addresses the rapid response teams that we have throughout the district in making certain that there is safety across the system and that we understand how that applies to school safety. It addresses bullying, not only the statement of non-bullying, but it also has the reporting responsibility for determining ways that we intervene, and we intervene in advance, not as a preventative measure, not just after we have the situations that occur. There is a strong collaboration with the Department of Special Education. I see this as not a position that is a special education position. It encompasses all of the needs of our general ed students as well. There's a strong working relationship between this position and special ed, but it is really not only a special ed position, it addresses student services across the system. While as special education is very specialized, it works by, by matter of I E P, works with students that are in special education, this position would work with all students and schools and staff, as well as with parents, to make certain that we have a unified delivery of student services across the district. Additionally, that person would be responsible for conducting hearings. We have hearings when students are being recommended for alternative school. We, we have a need for someone who can have that unbiased lens to be able to provide not only a judgment, but also to provide the necessary resources for parents as well as students. And we also have a need to be able to put in preventative measures to assure that our students are in attendance, but not just whether they're truant or in attending, but some of the root causes that we experience in our district. Because we have large numbers of attendance issues, and we need someone to look into that beyond just a surface, but to really get into the root cause of those matters and to address them.
Thank you. Mayor O'Leary.
And, Dr., I just was curious, where does this person fall in? Who would this person answer directly to?
This person falls into the Chief Academic Officer, working side by side with the other members of the Chief Academic Officer's chain of command, so to speak, along with the Director of Special Education, the Supervisor of Pupil Services as a side-by-side service, along with the District Climate and Attendance Coordinator, and along with the Special Education Supervisors. They all fall, fall under the Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you. Are we still under discussion?
Yes, we are.
So I'm here tonight to support this position for several reasons. One, it wasn't that long ago when we all sat around the room and realized that we were facing an enormous deficit two years ago, because the person who was charged to conduct hearings and do student placements for those with special needs at that time was directing these students in and out of district placements, which to the tune of about $1.9 million for that year. You know, this is one of these cases where, and I'm, I'm fully cognizant of the fiscal constraints that we face in this district and, and every other urban district in Connecticut. But this is one of these instances where I had been asking for, since that period of time, for an individual to be held directly responsible and accountable for that type of work. This is where you're sometimes penny wise and very pound foolish. In addition to that, what I'm very pleased about is the attendance issues, being involved in supervising our attendance counselors, because if you take the time, as I have, to look at our attendance in our schools, you will see that some of our attendance counselors are extraordinarily successful and some are not. And I think that that bears close watching. You, also career advancement in, in supervising guidance counselors. You know, one of the things that I think that we owe our students and our parents and their families is more accountability in that area as well. And I'm not at all being critical of our guidance counselors, but what I am wondering is if the workload is so enormous that our children are getting, are falling through the cracks. I really have been questioning that for many, many years. And when you have a ratio of one guidance counselor to 300 students, one often wonders how any normal person could keep track. I'm not suggesting that our guidance counselors aren't trying the best that they can, but I'd like to hear from a supervisor supervising them what we can do to do better as our graduation rates continue, in my opinion, to be relatively stagnant. So I, you know, being the fiscal conservative that I can be from time to time, as Commissioner Hernandez pointed out to me most recently, I would like to sit here in support of this position because I think it is incumbent upon all of us to recognize that we need to start looking at things a little bit differently. And most importantly, we have a brand-new superintendent who we've spent an awful lot of time finding and very proud to have her here. But I think that this is part of her agenda, and this is, if we're going to set the superintendent up with a contract that includes performance measures, then I think we should support what she's trying to do to improve the performance of this district. Thank you.
Any other points? I'm, I'm very supportive of this position as well, and in addition to what the mayor and others have said, I feel, after listening to the Waterbury Youth Service, I think they could, they need a point person in this district and other community organizations that work with our kids. They don't seem to have a point person that they could work with and collaborate with on some of these important issues. So I, I'm very pleased to see that we will have a person who can work with our community agencies on some of these issues and not, and not have really a person to talk to, because we spend money on grants and the community agencies serve our kids, but there's a breakdown in communication and follow-up with, with the specific schools. So I see this as a bridge position as well with the community, who more and more I think we're going to have to rely on for those deep collaborations for our kids. So I, I think this would be a real bone, and we might see that we have more community services that we can avail ourselves of if there's somebody on top of it. So I think that, to me, is, is another plus. So I'm in favor of it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Call the roll call.
Commissioner Wad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes. She said yes.
Yes. Commissioner Vigano?
Yes.
Commissioner Soriano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Dinstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Dinstone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes. 9-1, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is 13.4.
13.4. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for the position of District Climate and Attendance Coordinator. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Wad.
Could somebody just tell me what physical management training procedures are?
Thank you. Physical management, I'm...
It's listed as a requirement in the job description, certification of physical management training procedure.
Our teachers and staff are required to attend training and become certified in restraints and, and as part of a behavior management in the event that we have to use restraints. There's certain ways to do that, and the person also assures that it's done professionally and follows the rules and guidelines established by law.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vice President Harvey.
Thank you. I am in total favor of this position, a long-awaited position. Hearing the outcry from the community in regards to addressing school climate as it relates to bullying, issues, et cetera, I applaud this. Although I was listening, conferencing in on the call, Dr. Ruffin, I, I was looking through the requirements, and I know that there was a recommendation to state that bilingual was required. I'm looking for it now.
Bilingual, bilingual is preferred.
It's preferred. So I'm, I'm questioning, I'm looking through the duties of the, of this, this position and what this person will be doing, and I see that they will be training our staff, they will be monitoring data, they will be working with the behavioral techs, et cetera. So I'm just wondering why that requirement is needed. If it's needed in this position, then it should be needed in the other position. So I'm just wondering why.
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Ruffin, yep.
During our committee meeting, it was recommended, suggested that it be added to two of the positions that I brought to the table. I did add that. I want to be very clear that in my hiring practices, it is my intent, whether it's written or not, to hire a very diverse staff. And that includes diversity in a lot of different areas, and language is definitely one. Whether it's written or not, that is my intent. That would be a major, major focus of how I am going to intentionally hire staff to be able to carry us through. But it was a request, I added it, but I could just, just as well add it for every other position because there's a preference there, but I'm really looking for a top candidate who can work with us in a lot of different areas. Diversity is very important to us.
Okay. And I, I totally, wholeheartedly agree with that. My question is this. The, this position will be working with staff. And if we are going to add that, then I would like to see bilingual preferred, but not required, added. And the reason being is, again, I wholeheartedly, I'm standing out there with the flag on diversity. But I think people applying for this position need to know that if you are not bilingual, you are, you can still apply. And it may deter those who are fit the other qualifications, but not be able to fit the bilingual portion of it. And, and we are a diverse district, and some are bilingual, some are not. And we know the demographics of our district. So I would, I think it would be best if we added that in, because I've received calls, this, this is a very hot position, a very, a position that everyone is very interested in, and I don't want to deter talent because of what is ever perceived as being, you know, in, in the, in the job requirements. So I would like to see the wording added that bilingual preferred, but not required. And I think that would hopefully clarify some things.
Is there, is this a friendly amendment to the existing job specification?
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. Yes.
So she's made the motion to make it preferred, not required, in the language?
Preferred, but not required.
Could I have a second? Seeing none?
Okay.
Can't move forward with the motion.
Okay, very good.
Commissioner Adorno?
Thank you, Madam President. During the, our committee meeting, I was the one that made the recommendation to include bilingual, since the majority of our district population is of Hispanic or Latino. But I know some of the job descriptions and duties of some of these positions as far as pupil and even the district climate and attendance, they not only just communicate with staff, it's also stated here... with staff, it's also stated here that they do communicate policies and protocols to families, community, and staff. And I think, you know, being that it's not a qualification that is needed, it is preferred, in my opinion, so that it is someone that can communicate better to, besides just the staff, to the students, to the families, to the community, and all stakeholders. So, yeah, I was the one that made that recommendation during the meeting, and I think it is important, and I don't want it to defer other qualified individuals, but I do think it is important for our district. Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner, Vice President Harvey?
Okay. Then, I believe then that if we're going to do it for this position, that we need to do it for others, and that we look through our job descriptions and make sure then that we add it to all the others if that is the case. And I want to just, since we are on TV, make sure that everyone knows when they apply for this position, it's preferred but it is not required that you are bilingual. So, I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
That is the intent. Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney?
I'll bring this up again because I brought it up in the past about preferred qualifications. We have this listed headed as minimum qualifications, and I don't believe that minimum qualifications, that a preferred qualification belongs under that heading. I think it should be under preferred qualifications. I think it should be separate. It does clearly say bilingual is preferred, but it's under minimum qualifications, so it's kind of a conundrum. So, I have asked in the past that when we're doing preferred, that that become a separate subheading? I think that's where this really belongs.
Duly noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Abstain? No, one, no. Okay, thank you. All right. Next is 13.5.
13.5. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for the position of Deputy Superintendent of Schools. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Thank you. You know, it occurred to me as I was reading through all of these, with this new structure, this would have, all of these would have come to workshop, and we, all of us would have been more informed on it and had more of a chance to discuss it. So, this is a new position. These positions that we spoke about, most of them, we are somewhat familiar with, but this one is relatively new to us. So, I'm wondering if the superintendent, before we start discussion, can brief us, much like Superintendent Doctor that you did in Personnel Committee, do it now for the whole board so we're all brought up to speed, the people who were not there.
Thank you. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioner. In a district such as our size, it is very customary to have a position in either a deputy or a chief of staff or someone who's in second command to the superintendent. Someone who is a right-hand, so to speak, can also be an advocate for the district, work collaboratively with the board as well as with staff, and deliver a consistent message across the district. This position was previously in the organizational chart. It's very similar to the position held by Mr. Henry as a deputy superintendent. What I've done with the job description was to revise it so that it's very specific to the duties and responsibilities that would be needed moving forward. As a person that would have direct supervision along with me, certainly not a replacement for me, because I'm not intended to be replaced, that's not my intent, but certainly someone to be a right-hand person that could be places when the superintendent is expected to be everywhere, and sometimes you can't. We can make certain that we cover the entire grounds, and in my absence, that person would speak the exact same vision and be able to communicate that whether I'm able to attend that meeting later or whether that person is my sole representation. It is a person that drives the mission of all of the operations, and it works collaboratively with my existing staff, and it really makes certain that nothing falls behind because of lack of attention.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's notification to the board.
Motion received and placed on file. Superintendent, straight to the board. I have 14.1 through 14.9.
Second. Discussion. I just had a question on 14.6, Waterbury Career Academy After-School STEM Program Appointments. I'm just curious why there are so many administrators? We've got a lead administrator, a subadministrator, a subadministrator, three subadministrators, and one lead administrator. Sounds like a lot of administrators. So, I'm not sure, maybe you could look into it. It just seems like a lot of administrators for a program, an after-school program, unless there's a thousand of them in it or something, but, you know. Anyway, okay, just, there's something to look into. I don't know. It just struck me.
I will look into it.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is unfinished business of preceding meeting. Any unfinished business? Okay. 16 other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. Commissioner Sweeney?
Through the chair. We had on the agenda tonight the filling of several executive, top-level positions. Deputy Superintendent came before us, Supervisor of Pupil Services, and several others. And it highlighted once again that in a number of these positions that we go through civil service. And I would once again ask that we, as a board, notify Civil Service and the Board of Alderman with a request to remove Superintendent of Schools, the Deputy Superintendent, and the Assistant Superintendents from Civil Service. These are top-level positions that report to the Superintendent of Schools. Times have changed. The Superintendent in particular needs the ability to craft her cabinet, and I think that we need to give the Superintendent some more flexibility. Having these positions go through a test, be ranked, and then for the Superintendent and this board to only have five people that they can pick through or three people that they could pick through, just doesn't get the work done, I don't believe. And I believe it is time that we, as a board, request that of Civil Service. So, my motion would be to notify Civil Service and the Board of Alderman that we are requesting to remove the Superintendent of Schools, the Deputy Superintendent, and the Assistant Superintendents from Civil Service.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner?
Commissioner Sweeney? Isn't that a charter? We would have to go through the charter for that instead of Civil Service? The Board of Alderman would need to do it as a charter revision. But the request would have to come through Civil Service as first, as I understand the process.
I would ask that, I think it's difficult to make, to vote right now. I think, I would like to refer it to committee and then have a committee, the Policy Committee, decide to do that. I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate to do it right now, to vote on this right now, unless we're just voting to send it over as a request. And that's what you're asking anyway.
Correct.
So, the motion is to request the Board of Alderman to remove these positions from this-
Civil service? Civil, notify Civil Service and the Board of Alderman in the request.
Okay. And I think you're right, it will have to go through-
So, I'll offer a friendly amendment to your motion that this board would encourage the Board of Alderman to seat a Charter Revision Commission with the intent of doing what the rest of your motion said. And then it's a more appropriate motion to the Board.
So, that's a friendly amendment to your motion? Okay? And did you want to change the motion?
I don't agree, but I won't ask for a change. And I would agree because we've just gone through the hiring of a superintendent, and I think it was the smoothest hiring I've seen in the 38 and a half years I've been with the city of Waterbury. And I don't like to throw the baby out with the bathwater. When we finally get it right, I think we're going in a direction, I think that the Director of Civil Service, Mr. Scott Morgan, has shown his ability to work with this board unconditionally. And I think that without his input in this last superintendent search, by hiring the search firm, as well as his input about attracting a candidate with significant urban experience, made the difference here. So, I will not support that.
Any other points? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, with the, as amended, yes, that it would go to the Board of Alderman to seek a charter revision, to take the hiring out of Civil Service. All those in favor? Do you want to do a roll call? Do a roll call.
Commissioner Wad?
No.
Vice President Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagano?
No.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
No.
President Brown?
No.
Mayor O'Leary?
This is so cool. I've been waiting for this for six and a half years. A tiebreaker, Chuck. With all due respect, no.
Motion fails. There's no executive session this evening? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.